Hey folks, it's six o'clock. So let's get this meeting started, please. Please, if you are able, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get the roll call, please?
(inaudible)
Okay. Okay. Ellen Bass.
President.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
French.
Here.
Mayor Shippers.
Here. Thank you.
Okay, now I'm gonna, in a minute, I'm gonna open up for public comments. I want to reiterate that this is an opportunity for public comment, provide for the public a chance to make a statement regarding any subject matter. Public comment is not an opportunity necessarily to ask questions or to converse with city staff, council members, or others, other meeting attendees. If you have questions, of course, you can, there's contact information on the website, you could do that. I also wanna take a, it's three minutes per speaker, and I'll be using a timer for that. Also wanna just take a minute because I know that we have been heated a lot lately. And I just wanna quick tell you that on Friday, I went to the middle school, to Megan O'Trell Middle School for Career Day, and I spoke to eighth graders. And I spoke to them, they wanted to hear about my job as mayor, and I spoke to them about how I got my job as mayor, which was because of extreme bullying, someone resigned. So I wanna remind you of that, that our children pay attention. And your behavior, you are allowed to say your mind, absolutely speak your mind, that is absolutely allowed. But I'm gonna ask that you do it in a way that you maintain decorum, and that it does not shift into name-calling, bullying, that sort of thing. I'm gonna ask everybody to please be civil tonight. I know we have a lot of opinions in the room, and we will listen to all your opinions. But please do it in a civil manner. Okay? With that, I'm going to open the floor for public comments.
Mayor Shippers, excuse me, we need to approve the agenda.
Oh, of course we do. I always mess something up.
And make a movement to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mayor Shippers, Bill Burnett from Cadillac. Tonight is basically my one-year anniversary for coming to council meetings. Thanks for putting up with me for one year. I've tried to attend as many as I could, keep on it, and I'm appreciative that some things have happened with the city, and there's some good steps. And moving forward, although not as fast as I'd like, but thank you for the things you're trying to do. I wanna first talk about televising the council meetings. Thank you for voting for that. I appreciate that very, very much. I don't see Owen here tonight. I know he was apart. Mr. Peschek, thank you for reading the room and reconsidering. Mr. Ingalls as well, council member, thank you for that, putting that back. I have heard from people who are very appreciative of that, and that is exactly what you should have done. I'm just proud of you for bringing that back. I would ask that you consider passing a resolution for a health study for our citizens and get that to the Health Department. There's nothing wrong in asking, and that's something they could pay for. There's enough of this, it is widespread, it's in three different areas that we know of, seems to be all close to the industry. I mean, let's just be real, this is not caused by floss, the dental floss. The Eagle Group has had 100 meetings on this, and they have 30 people deep working on it. This is a big problem, and I would just ask that you keep your eye on the actual facts and not the spin. We had, at one point, 90 percent of our wells detected over by the high school. Anybody who's not had their well tested over there, please, not only write them another letter, but go visit them, beg them. And if you need my help to do that, I would do that, or find people that would help if there's a trust issue. So, a health study, more letters, I would ask what the status is. I, I'm curious what the city's role is in obtaining state funding, and whether you're moving forward with that, sending information that the state might need to support your, I'm just asking what the status, what's the city doing to move that funding request forward? I'm getting very concerned about the wellheads, wellhead protection program. I'd like to know, if someone could send me the information on who's on your committee, when you meet, when you're, where your minutes are available. I'm really concerned, on Crosby and Cardinal, in that area, there is a PFBS detection right across the street from our city wells that are on Crosby. Platte and 13th Street was talked about last week, it was underplayed quite a bit. Please get out there, go up and down that street, work with Haring Township, figure out what's happened to Platte Road and 13th Street. And that area is of great concern. There's an actual serious problem there that needs to be looked at, and...
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. That's your time.
Could I just say one thing?
Yes.
The people over by the high school, if they would get their wells tested, they get a free filter and a free test.
Thank you.
Hopefully it ends on a positive note.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
So, obviously, big night tonight, we're gonna talk about the LDFA, and I wanna talk about accountability. So not just in the abstract, but in the real measurable terms, and not just for the city manager, but this entire body with your oversight as far as the protection of our community. Our residents are not imagining things. We've watched as the LDFA made financial decisions without legal quorums, we've seen public meetings go unposted, unrecorded. I'm sorry, I can wait.
She thinks that you're doing, you're speaking from your document, and we can't see it.
Okay, my apologies.
Yeah, we assist her.
Okay, I didn't know, I mean, I can wait if she needs to get caught up on it.
Yeah. When you, when she gets something, right, and I'm gonna stop for a minute, start over.
Okay.
When, when we get something at the beginning of the meeting, she doesn't have the capacity to read it, so, and with you speaking, she...
Got it.
Okay, I'll give you a next one.
So we've seen public meetings go unposted, unrecorded, held in ways that violated the Open Meetings Act, we've seen the fallout, we've got PFAS contamination affecting our groundwater, we've got unanswered questions, you've got a growing number of citizens who feel ignored. And it's not about negligence, it's about public harm, and that's why I gave you a copy of that letter. We currently have over 200 signatures on that letter. And there's signatures from people who are blue-collar workers, and I've got seven pages of them right here, as a matter of fact, to attorneys, to doctors, and everybody else throughout the community, not just in the city of Cadillac, but also Wexford, because obviously this is impacting the greater area. But people are concerned. It's calling for an immediate investigation by the Michigan Attorney General and the U.S. Department of Justice into Cadillac's LDFA and its operations. It seems that the bylaws were just one of those things that if we found it convenient, we would use them, otherwise we ignored them. The petition details violations of OMA Act 57, and the environmental negligence, and the mismanagement of public funds. So let's be crystal clear, and that's not personal attack on Marcus. Marcus is the city manager, and he's repeatedly assured this council everything was legal. And it wasn't. Now, did he misspeak? Maybe so. But as a city manager, before you make a statement to the council and to the public, you should know your facts. Accountability means more than saying, "We'll look into it." It means real corrective action by this council. It means public performance reviews, it means training, I think Mr. Peschek could use some training, for sure, in OMA. It means the council acknowledging when mistakes happen, whether by intent or ignorance. The response cannot be silence or deflection. And I was offended by you saying, Mayor, that the other mayor resigned because she was bullied. She resigned because she quit. The petition's not going away, and neither are the people behind it. You had 200, and we're getting about 20 signatures a day. Our goal is to get 500, and I don't think that's gonna be an issue. So the question is, will the council stand with the citizens who elected you, or with the system that continues to operate behind closed doors and protects employees who are not performing their job? Thank you.
Hi, I am Mary Galvanic, and I, on behalf of Bill and the advocates, we would like a third-party investigation into these non-detect, especially these non-detect tests, but also, that's what any, any lab discrepancy would do. You have one lab saying one thing, you have another lab saying another thing, you get a third-party investigation. It's, it's just the status quo of lab work. This is not a shocking thing that we're asking for, that's just what every single lab that I've been working with would recommend during this time. So a third-party investigation is pretty standard, pretty normal, and we, we can definitely do that easily, and it can create accountability and transparency for all of you, and it can make all of us feel safe and good. I just think it's a very good idea. I also would like you to know that biosalads are not only about PFAS. I have farms that have high levels of heavy metals in their fields from an exceedance of biosolid applications over the years. Their fields are hurting, they cannot use that field. I have, think about the pharmaceuticals that we consume as the general public here. Do you want all of those pharmaceuticals on your food? What about the chemotherapy drugs that you take, that you aren't even allowed to use the same toilet as another person, they're so dangerous? But those go into our wastewater treatment plant, and then into our biosalads, and then onto our food. Biosalads need to stop, just like the state of Michigan, or the state of Maine ended our biosolid program there. We need to do that in the state of Michigan. The farther I dive down into biosalads, the worse and worse they look. Our farmers are not just getting biosalads from the Cadillac wastewater treatment plant, they are going down to Detroit Industrial Park. They are picking up pelletized biosalads from the industrial park in Detroit, bringing it up here and spraying it all over, and putting it all over the land that you live next to, that your children live next to, putting it on the food that feeds your cows, that create your steaks. These biosalads need to stop now. We need to support the end of biosalads, point-blank, period. And we could be a leader in that. We do have a PFAS resource fair coming up later on this month, partnering with the Cadillac Farmers Market, the Great Lakes PFAS Action Network, and the Cadillac Advocates for Clean Water. We will have extremely intelligent scientists with PFAS remediation skills, and all sorts of really intelligent people there. I welcome the city to come. I have already invited Owen as well. We all can learn together. This is about healing, you will be able to probably get a sound healing session while you're there, and maybe a 15-minute massage. This is not just about PFAS remediation, this is about healing our community and coming together at the end of this month and making water fun.
Mary, that's your time, but would you please say when that is, before?
I believe that is on the 27th of June, and that will happen from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the city park. We have the pavilion, we're shutting down the street. There will even be a Maine lobster truck for you to come and get some delicious water-based food. So it's all fun, and it's all healing, we can find resources, we can find the solutions. Please come.
Thank you.
Stephen King, 604 Holly Road. I'm up here because despite councilmember Ellen Bass's comments to Mr. Marine, I did sit behind that desk. I, for seven and a half years, watched the manager not do his job, not reach his goals, and not be held accountable. For the first four years, as those of you who are there know, I tried, excuse me, to mentor Mr. Peschek. It did not happen. He's not a leader, he refused to do his duties, he refused to follow up, and he always wanted to point that it was someone else's responsibility. Mayor, I also disagree. Mayor Philkins did not resign because she was bullied, she resigned because of events trying to defend Mr. Peschek, that misstatements were made, and also information that was supposed to be confidential was let go. And I was involved in that. So to say it was bullying is false. Mr. Peschek, you know you haven't done your job. You've done nothing to step up and do your job. If you had self-respect at this point, you are harming, you would see you're harming our community. Dissension on the council is rooted in Mr. Peschek. That was the root of the dissension in council. The mayor resigning was rooted in Mr. Peschek not doing his job, and being incompetent, and not being held accountable. You all have one job under charter, that's to manage this man. And he hasn't done his job, and there is ample evidence of it. Mr. Ellen Bass, you've talked about it many times in the past. But without accountability, without council doing its job, that's not happening. That's why I resigned, so I could be more vocal out here. I tried to have consensus on the council, tried to have Mr. Peschek held accountable. There were at least two, if not three, votes of no confidence, and three of you refused to take action. Mayor, you have the longest tenure on this council for allowing Mr. Peschek not to do his job. If you want others to do that job, then you can resign also. That isn't bullying, that's stating an opinion, and a fact that this council has not held the manager responsible.
Thank you.
I didn't plan on speaking, Paula Myers. I don't know how people can speak for Carla Philkins as to the reasons she resigned. I think it's unfair, and I think we need to stick to facts, and holding people accountable that need to be held accountable, but that's on this side of this podium also. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm Pamela Marine, and I live on Forest Lane. I have two positives to share with the council, and then one item that could be improved upon. Last year, we called Ken Payne to let him know that the lake was eroding all the way towards the road on Forest Lane and on Lake Drive, and he responded quickly, and they brought rocks, and it really, really helped the erosion. Unfortunately, then, it made the street end very hard to actually access the lake. So I did my due diligence, and that brings me to my second positive. I worked through the city ordinance, checked with the state, and realized that we were allowed a road-ending, non-exclusive dock during the summer. And so we put one in this weekend, and it has been quite a hit for the neighborhood. The kids that are in the young families that don't live on the lake, they're using the dock, they're launching kayaks, their little paddle boards, they're able to get to the lake and play, so it's been very positive. That also brings me to my one room for improvement. The city has given out mixed messages about this ordinance. There's a gentleman on the opposite side of the lake at an authorized road's end that was told he had to remove his dock. It was properly marked, it was properly maintained, it was temporary, it was non-exclusive, and he was threatened with a fine. So I think the city needs to straighten up the messaging, because I saw his letter, and I did my research to make sure I wasn't wrong, and the state backed me up that I'm fine to have that dock there. Thank you.
My name is Carla Moore, and I live in Cadillac. I was out in the last couple weeks visiting friends and neighbors, and I wanted to share some of the feedback I got from them, because I feel it's important. I spoke to about 35 or so people in the general area, and a few online of various websites, and they're mostly citizens of Cadillac. Not everyone can come to share their thoughts here directly. So, this is meant as constructive criticism. The first thing that I heard the most about is, there is no blanket solution to the PFAS contamination situation, but they want things to move faster. That was the primary thing that I heard from these folks. Several were very vocal in disagreement about any renegotiation discussion of contract, or I'm sorry, employment contract, performance reviews, or pay increases. They feel like just doing enough to get by isn't working anymore, and they said, "Please prioritize the citizens first, their health and welfare is your responsibility to all of you." And that's it.
Thank you.
I live across the lake, all right? So last year, on June 17th, I received a certified letter that says, "Remove your dock." It says, "Please remove your dock by today, or enforcement measures will be taken. DNR and Eagle Partners Wells will be made aware of this violation." When I looked it up, it's a $500 a day fine. I got it out of the, I got it out of the lake pronto, right? And then, it was a Monday, and I came down here to the city council meeting, and at the city council meeting, Mike Homer told me and everybody else that they're not allowed, right? So I'm going, huh. Guy across the street that wanted to put a dock in this year said he went downtown, and Abby gave him the ordinance, and it says, "Yeah, you can do it on these certain streets, you can do it." And I'm going, well, that's weird, because I was on one of those streets. So I reached out to all of you, I sent a text message to all of you, and had limited success. I had, people did respond, say that, I think, Scott, you said you weren't sure, maybe you saw something about that. Brian spent time talking to me, and Robert did too, and T.I., you said, "Go downtown and ask them," and Ruth and you didn't respond, so, I mean, and you're in my board, so, that's a little disturbing. Anyways, we have been talking about enforcement since the first Wellfield meeting about the short-term rentals, and this has been the number-one complaint that people have been talking about, because it starts pitting neighbor against neighbor, friend against friend. And here we are, a year later, I'm standing here going, "Did something happen? Can you now do it? Or how's that work?" And enforcement issues are Marcus's job. Your job is to enforce these people who enforce. Your guy's the job to make sure that he's enforcing them, so there's some failure here. Or you just have really short memories. So I see grass growing, which we had a special meeting about enforcement, which we were really talking about short-term rental enforcement, but then you have grass ordinances and dock ordinances, and, and then I know that you don't like seeing stuff posted on Facebook, but somebody posted on Facebook that there's a trailer parked across a sidewalk, and it had been like that for weeks, and we were talking about proactive enforcement. I'm like, that's why, why hasn't, why aren't they doing that? Because you could see there was by the garage and by the road, clearly, and nothing's hooked up to it. It's like, what's it take to have, what is Juanita doing? Because she never returned my call last year either, when I responded to the certified letter, giving me one-day notice. So, can we put docks at road ends?
I'm here at the meeting, listening to some of the comments here. My concern is that we are having a huge issue in trust and accountability, and my understanding is the city council is to be supervising that to the city manager. I don't have anything against Marcus, but I do agree that we've got some major problems that don't seem to be getting fixed. And my concern is, you know, is this gonna lead to lawsuits? Is this gonna lead to added liability and instability here in the city of Cadillac? And perhaps we need a fresh start with regard to some of the personnel, including the city manager, with regard to these issues. So I hope that's taken into account, because I think some of the, some of the allegations are quite profound. There's a petition to have the state attorney general involved. I don't think any of us want the state of Michigan involved in city affairs. Thank you.
Knowing what is right and not taking action on it is the truest form of cowardice. I've said this once before. Hearing all this banter about hate, rhetoric that brings on hate, statements that are made, some guarantees not followed through upon, campaign promises, this dock thing is ridiculous on the road ends. I've been coming to these meetings for three years now. I haven't seen any bullying. What I've seen is a plea, a plea for council to do what's best for its residents, the people you serve, not just one specific part of our community, the business, the industry, the retail, the big block stores, the private businesses, no, no, for everyone involved in our community. And you're hearing it, you've been hearing it. Over at the new building over there on 44 Road, you heard it. You had the maps out, the short-term rental stuff, the bed and breakfast, the rezoning. I mean, it just goes on and on. One thing leads to another that is all about your jobs, the transparency and accountability that we are asking for as residents who live in this town. This information I heard earlier tonight about a health study, now that'd be a good thing, especially concerning where we're at now in our town. But doggone it, at one point in your duties, you have to look at who's speaking to you, who is requesting of you in the duties that you have to your public. And it is your job to respond to that in a positive manner that will get your public to cheer you forward. And they will. But we've had all of our hopes, all of our requests fall on deaf ears. Something needs to be done. And if it goes to illegal action, you know, like Dr. DeBrowick said, you don't want the state to get in here and start taking action.
Thank you, Rick. That's your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one. Let me make sure I go to the next thing. PFAS update.
All right, I guess...
That's, you're on deck there, Jeff.
Yep.
Folks want to know where we stand with...
Testing?
Yeah.
Yep. We are still at 48 tests. We had one person call today, we're actually making door hangers out to go door-to-door to the people that haven't... We're actually making door hangers out to go door-to-door to the people that haven't tested. I'm hoping they're watching this tonight, and they'll actually call us. We did send them letters. Now, we're going to go to each door, do door hangers to scheduled times, and then we'll probably do another round of door hangers too. But, you know, at, at, at some point in the future, you know, we, we can only ask so many times for people to test. And so, we're going to do the door hangers as the next step, because it has died down quite a bit on the L D F, on the PFAS testing. So, we do have lots of tests left, and we want to go out and sample people, but we, we're just going to do the door hangers until we get the people. The last set of tests, we just got the results back, was the re-sample test. We had some issues, there were some issues at Cyclope Pure. There, we're not sure if a certain batch of tests got contaminated. So, they had us re-sample rather than test them, they said, go out and re-sample them. We re-sample those, and we've gotten those back just last week. And there was not, nothing really surprising in any of those.
What do you mean by nothing surprising?
There was some PFAS hits, but very low numbers. So, and most, most of them were non-detect, so. And then, what Mary said about a third party for the, if you were at the meeting, there was some disparity between Cyclope Pure test and state test. I, I do believe the two parties should get together, and they should get a third party to do that. That would be on the state or on Cyclope Pure, I think. You know, obviously, they're, they're the ones that are having the issues there. It's not a city test, we didn't, we didn't test this stuff, it's not our lab. So, I, I do believe a third party would be warranted. I think Cyclope Pure and the state should maybe have a third party do that. So, those tests were outside the city also. Those were the clean water advocates. I do believe that was their testing. That was, it was none of our internal tests that they couldn't reproduce. It was the clean water advocates test.
Nope, this is not your time.
Well, there might have been, there might have been one. Well, Alicia, well, anyways, I, I do believe Alicia Garber's in Boone. I think that's not Cadillac. So, it's not. I think, I, I might be wrong, I think another wrong person. L D F A, a quick update there. All the houses in the L D F A, those have been hooked up to water, and now we're pulling their wells. Will be our next stop, so, and for the PFAS there. Biosolites, I heard some biosolites. Again, we are Class A exceptional quality for the PFAS. We test four times a year to keep that status. And as for the metals being Class A EQ, we have a lot stringent, more stringent limits than anything else out there. So, those are extremely low too, in the, in the metals that we apply. So, I do not know of any fields we have where farmers having problems with heavy metals. It could be other farmers out there and other applications from other biosolids producers, but I, I'm not aware of any for the city of Cadillac that that would be that.
And the treatment of the biosolids, is it, as they're, as they're processed? What about the issue of like pharmaceuticals and chemicals in them? Is that something that should be of concern?
It's something we can take a look into, you know? As far as regulations, I'm, I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not up to speed on what the current regulations are for them, if there even is regulations in the biosolids for them. But it is something that we, we can definitely take a look at.
I think that, that would be a good idea.
Right.
Thank you.
Just wanted to add a question about the outside funding. We've talked about it before, but with leadership from Matt Schickel with the L D F A, Art Stevens, myself, Brian Warner with the L D F A, we have, and Jeff Dietlin submitted proposals to the state and federal governments to try to get outside funding. And so, we're still essentially in the queue, waiting to find out if that'll happen. It's not a fast process.
No, but it has been submitted.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question, please?
Of course.
I was very happy in the Up North Live meetings to see Ms. Galvannick. Ms. Giftos say they were willing to work with the city. Well, they asked you if you were willing to work with the city, and you both said yes. What? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm hoping that the city will, is working with water advocates, and that we intend on working with them. I mean, together as a team. That's, that's all I can ask.
From what I've seen, Jeff is in a regular discourse with Susan Giftos. What I've seen in emails going back and forth that we just get copies of. So, it looks to me like Jeff being our point person on the specifics of the testing results that we're doing, and the collaboration that is happening between the city and the wonderful efforts of the water group out here that has put so much time and effort into the self-sampling project that they're doing, not, well, mostly outside the city limits, but also starting probably within the city limits. Anyway, so, as that collaboration continues, and, and the data sharing happens, that, that's, I think, the most we can do at this point, but.
We, we did send out all our data to, to the clean water advocates, so they have all of our data.
Right.
Just because I think it's, it's vital we, we work together.
Yes.
That's all.
I agree.
Okay. Alright, thanks, everybody. Next, we have the consent agenda. All items listed on the agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion with roll call votes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Now, we have a public hearing, right?
Yes. Mayor, members of the city council, we have a couple of public hearings this evening. And I am going to introduce what, for some, might be a familiar face. Our former community development director has been assisting with us as we are going through the hiring process of bringing on a new director. Without any further delay, Jerry Adams, you can, you can stay there if you wish.
Thank you.
Please run us through the first one.
Very good. Sandra, would you put that?
Sure.
There we go, okay. Hello, everybody. Okay, the first one, we're dealing with that blue strip of land that you're seeing on the aerial. It's a three and a half by one hundred feet long strip property that is situated between six oh seven Maple Street and six eleven Maple Street to the south or towards the bottom. And this isolated strip, it's our understanding, or my understanding, in two thousand and eleven, it was deeded to the city as a result of a tax foreclosure. And we're not certain as to how this parcel ended up being created. If I had to guess, and I know the city fairly well, when a lot of these subdivisions in the older part of the city were surveyed back in the eighteen hundreds and the early nineteen hundreds, the surveys were done more or less manually, with tapes and chains and so forth. And what we have found over the years with the, the more electronic sophisticated surveying equipment that we now have, we periodically find that there are some discrepancies, put it that way. And so, this may have been the reason for the creation of this. Perhaps over time, these two properties and others around it have been resurveyed and resurveyed and so forth as they've sold, and, and this little parcel then pops up. But in any case, this area is zoned, R three, one family residential. And the reason I say this, it's important relative to six oh seven, the minimum lot width in this particular district is fifty feet. And six oh seven has a lot width of forty-five feet, so it doesn't meet that fifty-feet criteria. The lot to the south, as I'll call it, six eleven, is fifty feet wide. And so, one of the things we're going to recommend, or what we're going to recommend is the sale of this strip to six oh seven. It still would not make fifty feet, but it would bring it closer to the underlying zone district standards. You can't see this, but based on the aerial photos, it also looks like a portion of the curb cut off Maple Street into six oh seven, and a portion of their driveway actually lies under this strip. So, it's another reason that we're recommending, or going to recommend in a few minutes, that this little strip be sold to six oh eleven. It would help eliminate some of the discrepancy there. We did contact the owner of six eleven to the south. They have no interest in the property. They, they don't need it, don't want it, okay, so to speak. Obviously, the parcel is not buildable, it's really not usable. So, what we're recommending to council is we're asking you to approve the resolution that's attached in your packet for the sale of a three and a half feet by one hundred feet section of land to the property owners of six oh seven Maple Street. And I believe your resolution says in the amount of one dollar. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Heck of a deal.
Anybody have questions? Okay, anyone want, oh, it's a public hearing, so I will open the floor for comments related to this property issue. Seeing no one, closed public, oh.
We do have an opinion, we are in full support, we think you're fabulous. We would like to lower the price to one penny, please. Thank you.
They're eliminating the penny.
I think that's appropriate.
They're eliminating the penny.
While we can, while we can.
Yes, thank you for that.
If that's possible, staff does not disagree. But I don't know if it's possible. You would have to ask Mike.
Mike, what's the?
I wouldn't recommend it.
I wouldn't recommend it, okay.
But thanks for the, yeah, add a girl.
Okay. Anyone want to make a resolution or comment?
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to authorize transfer of real property, property on Maple Street.
Support.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Okay.
Okay. Jerry, second one?
Sure. I believe the next one is the ARPU. We're dealing with. You've seen this about a year ago, or at least some of you have seen it. And that is, about a year ago, the residential plan unit development regulations were amended to allow the planning commission, as well as individuals who wanted to develop a piece of property, to consider some deviations from the typical or required underlying zone district standards. And in order to, for example, perhaps reduce building setbacks, perhaps reduce lot size slightly, and things like that. And why would we do that? Well, in some cases, we have parcels in the city that really aren't conducive necessarily to the underlying zone district standards. But I think more importantly, we do have opportunities for developers and the public to see projects that have a real public benefit. And, but in order to gain that public benefit, sometimes there needs to be, or it's, the, there needs to be an opportunity, or we would like to have an opportunity to allow some deviation from those underlying zone district standards. Again, provided we can demonstrate a public interest, obviously, provided a whole series of other criteria and review standards are met. You reviewed this about a year ago, you approved it. You approved it with a sunset clause, and that is, it was to end, I believe, in April of, of this year. Essentially, all this is, is extending it for another year. You might say, well, why only a year? We are in the process of updating the full ordinance, and this will be covered in that full ordinance. So, you will have another opportunity to discuss it. But we're asking for the city council to simply approve an extension for another year. I believe it's to April one, twenty twenty-six, to allow the planning commission to consider slight or various deviations from the normal underlying zone district standards. Normally are, in, in particular, these are dimensional standards.
Thank you. Okay, I will open up the public hearing. Seeing no one, council?
Make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance amending the city zoning ordinance regarding variations in ARPU designs.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, we have a FOIA appeal.
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of the city council. We have a FOIA appeal this evening regarding requests for documentation from Ms. Brianna Hall. As it has been customary in the past, we request if the appellant would like to appear and provide any comments, that we give them an opportunity to do so. And then after that, we'll kick it to the city attorney and then the city council for discussion. This is regarding documents pertaining to the Cadillac area public schools fiber project and documents that we, we just don't have. I do not know if Ms. Brianna Hall is here. Never met her personally. There is no requirement that they physically be here or be a part of it. Is Brianna Hall here?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. So, Mike, would you like to give a summary then of the request and where we're at?
Sure. So, the city received a FOIA request and responded to that request. Specifically, there were five categories of documents requested. Permits, dig tickets, excavation authorizations, identification contractor, subcontractor, third-party entities. Then there were items three through five, which were communications, email, or documentation authorizing or referencing said work, including communications between the city of Cadillac, any school district, or third-party utilities, a map or record of any public right-of-way or utility easements affecting Ms. Hall's property or the immediate vicinity, and records of any notifications that were to be sent to nearby property owners prior to commencement of the work. City responded timely to that FOIA request by granting items number one and two. With respect to items three, four, and five, each department of the city searched its records and did not find any records that fell within the category of a request, and therefore responded accordingly by granting the request as to one and two, denying it as to three, four, and five, because those records do not exist. There was an appeal filed by Ms. Hall, who believes that records must exist, but the city has searched its files and has not located any documents that are responsive to the request. As you know, the city doesn't have an obligation to create or produce documents that are not in its possession, and the documents by which she's requested them simply don't exist.
Anybody? The project was actually being conducted by the Cadillac schools?
Correct.
Is that correct? And it happened to run next to her property?
Within the public right-of-way.
Within the public right-of-way.
Yep.
And it's done, and it's all put back.
Yeah. And, and, and which school or building was it going to? Do you know?
I don't know with a hundred percent.
Marcus.
Actually, but I think it's the high school.
All the, all the schools are getting fiber.
Okay.
Every school.
Okay.
So.
It was a huge project.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And it goes quick? I was surprised how quickly it went. Um, anybody want to?
Yep.
Well, do we need to?
Yeah, so, obviously, the documents don't exist. We'd recommend that the city council. We'd recommend that the city council affirm the denial of those items three, four, and five.
Anybody want to make that?
Yes. Make a motion, we deny three, four, and five for the FOIA request.
Second.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alambas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Communications?
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from noon to four P M. On June seventh, two thousand twenty-five for the Army Band Concert.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from noon to four P M on June seventh, two thousand twenty-five for the Army Band Concert.
Support. Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alambas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from eight A M to three P M. On July twentieth, two thousand twenty-five for the Cherry Grove Church of the Nazarene.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from eight A M to three P M. On July twentieth, two thousand twenty-five for the Cherry Grove Church of the Nazarene.
Support.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alambas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the display of a banner, street and parking lot closures, and the serving of alcoholic beverages for the Cadillac Festival of the Arts as presented.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner, street and parking lot closures, and the serving of alcoholic beverages for the Cadillac Festival of the Arts as presented.
Support. Councilmember Alambas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from nine A M to three P M on June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five for the Cadillac Farmers Market PFAS Resource Fair Water Event.
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from nine A M to three P M on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five for the Cadillac Farmers Market PFAS Resource Fair Water Event.
Support. Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alambas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. This sounds like a great event. Unfortunately, I will be in Wisconsin for Granny's camp at the time, so I won't be there. But I encourage everybody else to please attend. And I'm sure I'll see pictures and hear about it. Okay, city managers report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. At the last city council meeting, there was a request to have the LDFA as an agenda item for some discussion. In the public packet, I did include a copy of, I believe it's the last LDFA report that went to the board dated, was it March?
Yeah.
March. Provides a nice overview of what the authority does and where they're at in terms of groundwater cleanup, where they where they were at in the past versus where they are at currently. Also, like I said, included a copy of their bylaws. All of this information is also, I believe, available online as well and is accessible. I know that there may be some questions by council members or some commentary that you guys wanted to make. And so I essentially yield the floor accordingly, so.
Do we, are we gonna, is there a presentation of the stuff that's in the packet? Or this is just from the LDFA board from March twelfth?
Yeah, it's it's from the LDFA board from March twelfth. Jeff, our utilities director, did provide, was it April?
Yeah, every month I'm providing now what.
No, 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 when did you provide an update to council? You also provided very similar information as a PowerPoint to city council.
The same PowerPoint in April.
In April.
If I may, Marcus, too?
Yeah, sure.
Before too much discussion, though, the LDFA is, has a meeting scheduled to discuss the bylaws and about bringing changes to the council. I think it's June fifth is our meeting that they're gonna start discussing those changes in the bylaws that they want to bring forward to the council. So I just wanted to let that out.
One of the low-hanging fruit is the actual meeting date, which the bylaw says is supposed to be at noon on the first Mondays of the month. That I'm not certain if they've ever met at noon on the first Mondays of the month. And the conversation has been to look at changing that language to just similarly similarly say what the city charter says for city council, which is they'll they'll meet once a month. And then they'll publish a meeting schedule like what we do at the beginning of the the new year, you know, end of the calendar year. They'll just adopt a schedule of when of when those dates will be. But that's that's just one example. I'm sure there'll be a few other tweaks that that the board's gonna want to make.
I know there were issues with having specific numbers stated for quorum. Whereas according to the Meetings Act, the quorum is a is a majority of the seated members. So, you know, I hope they address the, because sometimes you don't have all the seated members there for one reason. Not there, but I mean, all the seats aren't filled for one reason.
Well, and the number of members itself is a bit odd, being that it's an even number. It's ten. Should it be eleven? Should it, you know, should it be ninety?
Should there be a range?
Seven?
Should there be a range?
Well, and then what's the interplay of, can we just do that? Or does the state of Michigan need to get involved? Is it, is it, was it set statutorily? So there are some things that are gonna need to get figured out.
Good, thank you.
All right, I guess I, yeah, a couple of questions about the LDFA. So, because I I've watched the meetings, I'm really glad that we're posting them online. And I know one of the things that came up is that the members of the LDFA and the city manager didn't have copies of the bylaws in the past. Now, currently, they're posted online with our minutes. And all the members now have copies of the bylaws. But what steps are we taking to make sure that this isn't happening in any of the other boards and commissions? What's the onboarding process for when members are appointed to these boards by us? And and how, what does that process look like? And has it been reviewed in any other, any of the other boards?
That's a, that's a great question. And, you know, currently, we use a member of staff that typically is our treasurer that puts together a small packet of information after somebody is officially appointed by city council. And then that particular staff person. What the board is, and we have a whole host of boards, whether it's, you know, the cemetery board to the LDFA to the DVA, you know, planning commission, city council itself. The staff person, generally speaking, is the is the direct liaison or the direct contact for that board. Will then meet with the new people, try to bring them up to speed, provide them with all the documentation, you know, that they may need to get to get going. But it's it's definitely a a learning on the on the fly process. And so I think, you know, we can, we can certainly do better moving ahead in getting getting things more nailed down, especially with regard to, you know, some of the boards that may not meet as frequently and, you know, may have some turnover. You know, the turnover on the LDFA board, I don't know if turnover is the right word, but, you know, we went from from having just a handful of members to the the full ten, it seems like almost overnight. And so, you know, I know I've done, you know, what I could do to try to meet with some of those, some of those new folks and as had Jeff. But whether it's that board or others, you know, having having more of a a policy in place to really make sure that folks get get up to speed is is the way we're gonna look look forward, so.
I think it was a month ago, like when we put, like Carla Moore on the Historic District Commission. Do we know if if she received a packet? What type of packet she received? Or if there's, like, do we, do we know what what she got?
I I personally don't know. If she did receive a packet, it would have come through likely our community development department, which of course, right now, is down down in the director position. But we can obviously make sure that she has some information versus just going at a completely, you know, completely blind, if you will.
And I know they haven't met yet. I asked her last time, and she said they, I asked her how it was going, and she said they haven't met. So, yeah, I think that's that's just good policy, too. When people come on board, they get a welcome folder, even if it's in he folder.
And I think, I mean, I think that's what you you saw with some of the LDFA stuff. And and I mean, I guess there's no, like, without a formal review and and then a correction or a formalization of that process, you could see the same type of thing happen, where a member of the historic district didn't know the things that they needed to know. You know, I, the planning commission, there are, there are levels of importance. And sometimes with, you know, even as simple as informing people of the Opens Meeting Act, now that they're officially on city boards. So I do think some stuff needs to be specialized, but there can also be a broader packet that's handed to anybody who volunteers to, gets appointed to serve on these boards. And I think that's an, you know, an important part, as I'm reading through some of the LDFA stuff and some of the stuff that went wrong, that that would go a long ways. The formalization, that process would go a long ways towards making sure that mistake doesn't happen again. So I would definitely like to see us, I mean, basically, I mean, start over. I mean, when I'm, when my wife was elected to the Historic District Commission, I think you had a lot of material there that was left from when Nan Taylor was in charge. And and included the history, it included the state law, it included the the city law. And that was a very impressive packet. I think when I got on the zoning board of appeals at that point, it was a city representative. It wasn't the chairman Nichols. It was Mike Coy at that point, who I think gave me the OMA packet, gave me the relevant section of the zoning code. So I do think whether there's improvement to to be made, once we review that process, I think it'll be clear. And we can either cement the process that we have or fix it and improve it accordingly. So I think that's that's one of the things, as I, you know, as I delve into the LDFA story, that is kind of one of the low-hanging fruits, I think. So I, you know, I definitely hope we move in that direction. I do know from watching the LDFA meetings that we're trying to track down and post all the old minutes from the past LDFA meetings, but that some of them may have been lost. Is the process of finding those or recovering those, tracking those down and posting them, is that still something we're doing? Have we found all that there's to be found? Where are we at in that?
My understanding is that we found everything that we have. I think everything that that we have ever created has been through the Freedom of Information Act requested. And so, you know, what we have is what we have. It's just a matter of getting it on, you know, on the web. We have, we have updated the archives to have all of the different boards and commission sections. I believe they're all now on there. And so the the outline, the digital outline for being that archive is there. But there is, I believe, some difference between the different boards, like where you'll find information. So as a, for instance, if you, you know, look under city council, you'll see, or rather, right on the homepage, you'll see at the bottom of the homepage, you know, there's a button that you can click that takes you right to council agendas. But there's also, on the left-hand pane, a button that you can click that'll take you to, you know, to the archive right on the on the front page. That also takes you to city council information. So I know that that sounds confusing, but basically, there's more than one way to get to the information that you're looking for. It's all not yet up on the website. There's only a couple of people we have that have access to actually update the website to try to not unintentionally break the site. There's only a few people that are trained in it or a couple of people that are trained in it. But it is something that we are doing, so.
Okay, and then, as you were talking about the foias, I know at one point for the LDFA, someone foiaed the notices or the public postings for the LDFA meetings to see if the meetings that were had were being properly noticed. They were trying to match them up, match the minutes up with the number of meetings and the dates. Is the LDFA, are the LDFA meetings noticed in the newspaper? Do we save door notices that are posted outside, like I see when I walk in here? What type of, what type of process specifically with the LDFA do we go through to alert the public? And then are those records, I mean, are those notices even kept?
So the LDFA meetings, similar to some other boards and commissions, currently meet under the OMA as a special meeting, which requires, if you have a website, which we do, that you put the notice on your website as well as you post it on your doors. Unless I'm mistaken, there is no requirement to send it to the newspaper. I can't sit here and tell you with a hundred percent certainty that staff has never sent a notice to the to the newspaper, but I can tell you that we do properly notice the, on our website and on the doors. We are archiving our agendas and our minutes. Meeting notices, I do not believe, are required to be archived and therefore they're not. Doesn't mean that we don't have any. And that's where I think confusion falls in. Because, you know, if we do have something and somebody does FOIA us for it and we are able to produce it, and then you are looking at trying to match up a particular agenda to a particular meeting and then even finding a particular set of minutes. Well, if if all of it was noticed and set and then there wasn't a quorum, then it wouldn't have been a meeting. So there would not have been minutes then created or an official log that there wasn't a meeting that happened. You know, and likewise, we may not have the actual advertiser for it. You know, we'll have the agenda for it if we had a meeting that was scheduled, but we may not have the actual advertisement.
If we don't hold the meeting because lack of quorum, the agenda's still, is the agenda still archived?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, unless we were, we're, have deleted it, but I don't, I don't think we typically do that. We would have kept it all, so.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure what's funny about that, but we would have had meeting agendas, you know, kept. Just kind of go back and you save the file as a new date.
Right. But any meeting that was held, the minutes are, of course, available, yeah, okay.
Now, I I I guess on a slightly related, so is there, do public bodies have instances where they meet without quarums in an official setting but don't deliberate? Like, I know when when we had to cancel a council meeting, I I think it was in December, when former council member King and and the mayor were the only two that were here, people said, maybe you should have that meeting, you should at least hear public input. The two of them should have done that. Was, like, it, for the council setting, was that something that could have been done? And then for, you know, the LDFA, is there moments where we're having informational meetings with one or two people, you know, seated, but there there's not necessarily discussion in a quorum? Does that happen or?
So that did happen about a week ago. There was a meeting that was posted, advertised, scheduled for the LDFA to meet. One of the items on their agenda was an official informational meeting. It's not, you know, I guess, it's gonna sound, again, somewhat confusing, but not a meeting to provide information, but under under requirements for that board, they have to have an official informational session, official informational meeting. I was out of town, but my understanding is that not enough members of the board can make it to the regular meeting date that that session was gonna take place. And legal confirmed that you could still have, even without a quorum, hosting that informational session where you provide general information to the public, where the staff provides that information to the public. No deliberations, no action taken, just information provided, so.
Now, the the LDFA bylaws also said that they were supposed to meet once a month. And that that wasn't happening, and we don't quite know for how long. Is that, you know, do you know how long that's that's been happening? Or about how many meetings did they have since you had been a part of that board? Or what what's your knowledge of that?
Yeah, I I don't know exactly how long it's been happening, other than to tell you that since even before my time, they were not meeting on noon on Mondays. The meetings were, when I inherited it, were taking place at like seven or seven thirty in the morning because that was, that was the best time that the folks that were on the board could could meet. Most of them were members of industry. I know that through fulfilling of the various Freedom of Information Act requests, we saw in minutes, going back to the early, I want to say the early two thousands, may have been even late nineties, that they also were not meeting per their bylaws. That doesn't excuse the fact that the bylaws weren't necessarily. That doesn't excuse the fact that the bylaws weren't necessarily being followed to the, to the T. Uh, I'm just sharing that it's, it's been a long-term practice of that board, um, meeting when they could. So, a- again, it's not, doesn't, doesn't excuse the fact that the bylaws also got lost at time either. Which is good that we're at a point now where everyone is well aware of them uh, and are looking at making improvements to them to make them workable, um, with the contemporary board that they have today, so.
And that's one thing about bylaws, is that the board itself can adjust the bylaws, yeah.
Uh, this does require councils' ratification.
And then, uh, I think as the mayor was mentioning too, the thing in the bylaws about, um, six members being required. Um, I mean, that wasn't being followed because, um, we, no one had the bylaws. Um, but was the interpretation at the time, um, that, just like all the other boards, that if a majority was present, then they move forward, um, with the decision-making processes, is that how it operated?
Yes, yes, that it was majority of those that were appointed, if they were there, then that was a quorum. And that even might be something that Mike could chime in on, I know that we've had that conversation before regarding the Open Meetings Act and appointed membership.
Yeah, so, there's a little difference in the wording between, well, let me, let me go back for a minute. Under the LDFA, bylaws are not actually required, in fact, you won't find the term bylaws under the LDFA. It doesn't exist, what they do say, what the statute does say, is that the LDFA uh, shall adopt rules governing the procedures of its meetings, okay? And those have to be approved by the city council. Um, so they're named bylaws, which by any other name is probably a rule with respect to the membership and the meetings, et cetera, so. Um, but there's a difference in the wording between what is, what constitutes a quorum, um, in this case, six, under the uh, bylaws versus um, vacancies in those positions. Where if you had a quorum, but you had a majority, um, you could be in a position where you have a number of vacancies, which I know the LDFA had for a number of years. And the Open Meetings Act refers to it differently as a quorum being those who are either appointed and serving in that position. So that if there are vacancies, it would not, um, uh, hamstring the public body from continuing to meet and make decisions with respect to whatever they're charged with doing. So, and I think that's one of the issues the LDFA will consider in terms of making those amendments. And the LDFA's, um, statute itself, even though it was recodified in twenty eighteen, um, obviously has some challenges just because of its, um, age. Like it hasn't been kept up to date, there aren't, um, there are municipalities with LDFA's, um, but I wouldn't say overwhelmingly that, um, majority of municipalities have existing LDFA's. And so, um, at the end of the day, I suppose, you know, you'll get to a point where, you know, you're going to see revised bylaws sort of trying to reconcile that language with the language of the OMA. So that there's no dispute about how many members you must need there for a quorum. And the city manager is correct that, uh, you can, if you have a properly noticed meeting without a quorum of the membership, you can still meet and discuss, you just can't make a decision. In fact, there's an AG opinion from two thousand and nine that says just that. Um, that the meeting itself is properly noticed and you just might not have people who show up. That doesn't preclude you from discussing topics or whatever, it would preclude you from making any decisions.
Thank you.
Do I have just a little bit more? Um, and now I guess I'm going to go back just a little bit further because I want to, I mean, some of the, one of the things that people mentioned, um, with, um, not being able to provide oversight, which is where I'm going to end at, is that um, it was, uh, hard to keep track of the LDFA, um, that they didn't know that the, that there was PFOS found in the, um, wells and that, that wasn't a part of the area's story. Um, so I, I'd like to go back just a little bit, um, to the history of the PFOS in the news, i- in our newspaper, in the Cadillac area, the public, public awareness. Um, as far as I can tell, you're first hearing about this in twenty eighteen, it got, um, tested at Baker College, it was found in the Herring Township water supply. Um, in twenty nineteen, the Cadillac News published an article about the injection well. Um, we were treating that leachate, um, and they were talking about the treated water going into the clam. Um, the article says, we were, leachate was coming to us at a hundred and twenty parts per trillion of PFOS and five hundred and ninety parts per trillion of PFOA. And, um, we reduced that to seven and twenty parts per trillion, um, and that that was below the action level. That's what the article said in twenty nineteen about the, um, city of Cadillacs leachate. Um, you know, I don't, I, you know, people say there's a cover-up that the PFOS what was, you know, we were trying to keep it a secret, we were trying to protect ourselves. There's no, um, cover-up of PFOS in the area, it wasn't a secret. In twenty eighteen, it was at Baker, it was at in Herring Township, later at the CTC, the effluent going into the clam. Um, there was not, it's not a secret that PFOS was in the area. Um, it's so much not a secret that our drinking water wells were vulnerable, that the city, um, you know, put in a second well field location, we spent a lot of money to do that. For basically the same reason that the EPA was stating in their twenty ten report, um, they recommended that we require all current and future residents to connect to the municipal water supply and abandon all private wells. At the same time that the wells were testing clean for known contaminants. And the reason they said that, the same reason we put in a second well field, is because the plumes of contaminants were unpredictable and certain things were unknowable. Those federal reports, twenty ten, twenty fifteen, twenty twenty, that made those recommendations, also not a secret. That's the EPA, those reports were reported online, they've been available online the whole time. Um, I've read from parts of them, I've made recent efforts to highlight those. Um, you know, I wish, I wish that those, uh, were a more important part of the story. The public information that came out in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen was so unalarming at the time that Herring Township never even bothered to filter the PFOS out of the drinking water. Um, three, three, more than three years after this, um, the Cadillac News came out with another article, uh, in twenty twenty-two, where you have Audrey Wood showing up at Hare- Herring Township meeting, um, asking what was being done to manage PFOS levels in the township's water. This, a- a- again, the article mentioned that the levels were below actionable levels, um, that's what she was told in twenty twenty-two. Now, between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two, and even after that, um, I went to restaurants in Herring Township. I can taste what their water tastes like, it doesn't taste good, I didn't know there was PFOS in it. Um, I, I went to the restaurants that, that served, that where people drank water, um, the fountain pops, um, unfiltered tap water that Herring provides with PFOS. You know, what, and, and again, like I said, why, why was that PFOS still in the water more than three and a half years later? Um, because as the article said, the most recent sample determined that PFOS numbers were below the action level. You know, so I did want to focus first on, on, on the allegation that the public wasn't informed um, in the city and in the area, because the LDFA didn't report that we were testing it, um, in the wells. Because the tests that, um, the positive tests that came in the wells in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two um, were again below, um, actionable levels, just like, uh, the Herring Township tests. Um, just like, um, the effluent, you know? Now, I do wish that I could stop there and say, um, if you were paying attention, um, to the LDFA, if you were paying attention to the news, um, you know, you, you'd have this information, you'd know it was in the LDFA wells. Um, you know, but I, you know, I can't say that. And I wish I could. Um, so as we, you know, went and talked about those LDFA meetings, um, you know, where would I find out? If the, um, if, you know, that the, uh, LDFA had discussions about PFOS, um, that, that Eagle wanted to test. Um, that, as some people are saying, where would I find out who made these decisions and how they made the decisions? Where would I find out whether we had a quorum? You know, you're, you're going to find all this stuff in, in the minutes. And, you know, our response for how, you know, how would you get a hold of these minutes? Well, you go to city hall and FOIA them. And I, you know, I think that, that's too high of a barrier, um, that's not good practice. Um, I appreciate all the oversight, um, that, uh, citizens provide for local government. You know, we have a local newspaper, one of the last locally owned and operated ones in the state of Michigan, um, and a lot of places don't have that. Um, citizens are an equally important part of this process. And they can't participate in the process if you don't treat minutes like they're important. Um, I've been in a lot of minutes, um, formal, informal, no one wants to be the secretary, no one wants to take minutes. It's easy to forget, um, as you maneuver, um, through the bureaucracy, how, why? And even, uh, when, sometimes when they're going to be important, because you don't understand, um, sometimes till years later, what decision-making somebody's looking back on. Um, what decision they're trying to understand or what they're, what they're trying to find out or prepare themselves for. Um, so I think, you know, with the, um, ensuring that the boards and commissions, commissions that are operating, that they operate, um, i- in an informed setting, that, that those board members get the information, that bylaws are published online, that we don't make people, um, FOIA minutes, that they're available. I think, you know, what, what, um, carrying the LDFA meetings on YouTube, um, putting the council meetings, uh, back on spectrum. Um, I think that's how you ensure that these mistakes don't happen again. Um, that's how you increase transparency, um, and that's how you enhance the ability, um, for citizens to provide oversight. So I do think we've made, um, a lot of positive steps. I think there were a lot of concerning issues that, you know, the LDFA issue is important to look at, because it's also, it's going to prevent the problem from happening again. It's going to point us towards solutions that, um, improve transparency, um, and improve the process. So I am, you know, I am happy, um, that we're, that we're headed in that, that direction, that we're dealing with these problems one at a time. Um, and I hope we continue to accomplish things as we move throughout the summer, uh, that are all the things I'm talking about, you know, all the minutes need to be posted. Um, our, our boards do need to, we make sure everybody that sits on our boards have the, have, has the information that they need. So I think, you know, that's what I'm going to, um, continue to work towards, so.
Okay. Anything else from anybody with that? Okay, well, we have a second public comments. Second verse, same as the first.
Stephen King again, Holly Road, Cadillac, Michigan. I can't believe what I'm hearing from the council, and I know council knows better. Marcus Pesha is the manager, he's been the manager for fifteen years. Marcus, you gave me another topic point with Pete Stalker and Presha Emmons, I know they had the bylaws. You had the bylaws available to you, you chose not to read them. That is a failure to do his job for fifteen years. Again, I'll cite my memo from September one, two thousand twenty-three, asking for a specific update from Marcus on the LDFA, and you all got the answers. His answer was, he believed only one meeting a year was, was necessary, that the meetings weren't happening. When the information came out that there was corruption with the computer files, there was no corruption, there weren't any meetings, he hadn't had the meetings. It's part of the cover-up, the cover-up is always worse than the crime. And you know what? He has to be held accountable by the council, did he do his job? No, he did not do his job. Two thousand eighteen, ordinance to hook up all the other wells. Did he do it after council, and I was on council, pass that ordinance? No, he did not, he failed to do his job. He failed to manage his staff to ensure that those wells were hooked up. People, the reason there's so much anger and frustration in the community is because of Marcus Pesha not doing his job. The anger has increased because none of you are willing to do your jobs. Read the charter, read the bylaws. Mayor, when you said, well, it could be a simple majority, no, it can't, the bylaws say six out of ten. Mr. Homier gave you a word salad. The rules were the rules, Pete Stalker followed the rules, Presha Emmon followed the rules, Marcus failed to follow the rules. And then when he was caught in it, he tried to cover it up, in my opinion, and that cannot be acceptable. When we had enforcement of ordinances, it took two years and meetings to have any type of movement. But what is the main point? That job was not getting done. Whose job was it? Marcus Pesha. Marcus wanted to point to John Moss. When John Moss didn't do his job, it was Marcus's job to manage him, and he failed to do it. You have my evaluations that talk about all the times we put forward, how we could succeed, and my, uh, at the end of the year saying he hadn't done it. This isn't a new manager where we say kumbaya, let's give him a chance to, to succeed. He has failed for fifteen years. The failures have gotten worse. Your job is to protect the citizens of Cadillac, not protect the job of Marcus Pesha.
Paula Myers, Hilltop Lane, Cadillac, Michigan. Again, I didn't mean to speak. And I'm responding to Robert Ingles and thanking you for your due diligence in allowing me to make sense of part of what's going on. Um, the other part I'm not involved in. Um, and again, I appreciate everybody on council. I know, I, just thank you, that's all I have to say.
Brad Marine, Cadillac. Yeah, Mike's right, it says the board shall adopt rules, this is Act fifty-seven in two thousand and eighteen. The board shall adopt rules governing its procedure and holding of regular meetings, subject to the approval of the governing body. Thus the bylaws, okay? Now, maybe they don't use the term bylaws anymore, maybe that's an old-school term, but those are the procedures that were adopted by the LDFA. Mr. Pesha sat right here and lied to you all, saying business decisions were, were not conducted without a, a quorum. The minutes are right there, that there were five members, they awarded no bid contracts without a legal quorum. I FOIA'd those postings, those postings don't exist. If they do exist, you didn't give them to me, shame on you. So let's begin with the, the fight, local development finance authority. There, they have to comply with the Open Meetings Act. You have legal boundaries and you can only act with a quorum. He sit here and lied to you, in, which, I can't believe it, because the minutes are right there. It's not a, a matter of interpretation whether six is a quorum, whether you like the term bylaws or not, it doesn't matter. It says six is a quorum. You can't just arbitrarily decide when and, when you're not going to follow the rules. You can't be serious with that. I can't believe Mr. Homier would support that, yeah, you know, we can, maybe we'll follow it this time, maybe not this time. No, if you don't like it, then you change it, and there's a process to change it, it's not an arbitrary decision. By the way, Mr. Ingles, thank you, I appreciate what you just did tonight. The city charter five point two makes it clear, the city manager shall be responsible to the council for the efficient administration of all departments of city government. That includes planning, zoning, infrastructure, and legal compliance. If he's, we're sitting here watching him lie to you, do you really think that the community's going to trust you? And you all sit there and act as if it must be okay because there's wiggle room in the bylaws, because we don't like the term bylaws? Act fifty-seven doesn't specifically say bylaws, it says adopt procedures? What other procedures did the LDFA adopt? It, it's just mind-boggling, mind-boggling. Code enforcement, inconsistent is all get down, where does it land? Mr. Pesha. The water asset management plan, three years behind schedule, who's responsible? Mr. Pesha. Zoning, master zoning plan, five years behind schedule, who's responsible? Mr. Pesha. The list goes on and on and on. And you don't sit up there and challenge him, you just sit up there and go north-south, yes sir, yes sir. He says things and I think, oh my goodness, and nobody comes back, although I will say Mr. Ingles did, thank you, and say, well, wait a minute, I got a question. I wish you would have brought up those minutes, and said, well, this only has five. You voted for a no bid contract and awarded it without a legal quorum, please explain yourself. I would like to hear that, with that paperwork sitting in front of him. Because he, he is, he reminds me of, of a, a former president for candidate, or presi- cand- presidential candidate. Word salads, as I ended with a word salad.
So my name is Mary Galvanic, I'm going to jump around a little bit, and I've got a lot to say. Uh, but really, I should just be able to say one thing, walk out, and you guys do your job. Marcus should simply be fired for not following the two thousand eighteen ordinance from the EPA. That one thing right there should get a city manager fired, we shouldn't have to talk about anything else. But we will. Herring Township did inform, I will say, um, their people do know, that's why they're not upset like us. They were informed, um, they did talk to their people, the newspaper articles came out. Uh, where's the article from our city manager saying that the EPA wants everyone on municipal water in twenty eighteen? Where are our articles informing us in those newspapers? We didn't get them, that's why we're upset. We didn't get them, that's why we're upset. They, uh, were turned down for testing in our area by both Marcus and Jeff. And I watched the, the, uh, meeting where they pulled the wool over all of your eyes, and it was very sneaky. Um, you should re-watch that meeting. Uh, we aren't saying that you covered up PFAS in the area, we are saying that you withheld the EPA's request for testing, and you didn't tell us, you didn't inform us, you didn't get those newspaper articles, you didn't call us, you didn't put a door hanger on our door, you didn't do anything. You have someone giving out packets? But no one from the council had LDFA bylaws, and not even you had the LDFA rules, I'm sorry. So, but you have packets from, you know, your secretary going out, but nobody in the LDFA got one? So I don't believe that you have that going on in your staff, very well, Mr. Marcus. You say all the time, we can do better, we can do better. Every meeting, I hear Marcus saying, we can do better, we can do better, we can do better, we can hire a better city manager. We have one on staff, his name is Owen Roberts, he should manage the city, and we all know it, he's our interim city manager. He is already doing most of Marcus's job because dealing with people down at the market and all of the events that was supposed to be some of Marcus's job, the city manager's job, and I see Owen doing the city manager's job all the time, you might as well pay him for it. You won't hold Marcus accountable and fire him, so we will continue to do it for you. We will never hear like a dog on a bone, I am never letting go and not think about Marcus. I am not going to stop until you get rid of him, none of us are, there's, I think there's thousands of us. Uh, forty-eight tests, Susan and I have a list of over a hundred people who trust us and want us to come out and test their homes, more than we can even possibly get to. You are not trying, and people do not trust you to come to their home, obviously. Another example of terrible leadership creating horrible issues in our city. People are not getting the results that they need, as far as me working with the city, they are the slowest entity that we work with. And let's see, the mayor did not get bullied, Marcus has broken laws, and you are pinning people against each other in this town, and you need to be gone.
Andy Van Oost again. I wouldn't be here if Marcus was doing his job, or John Wallace, or whoever does the enforcement, but here I am, over three Easters later, still complaining about enforcement. So I can't argue with what these people are saying, I think that Marcus does a lot of good things, I like him, I like the guy. Uh, but, you know, we're looking for enforcement, we're looking for resolution to the, uh, PFAS stuff, and, uh, we're not really looking for fishing piers and, and playgrounds, right? That, I don't know how that ever got onto the agenda, because we've got bigger fish to fry, so that's all I got.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to close public comments.
I lost it. Okay, thank you.
Right there.
Rick Torres. One thirteen at Siegel Place, none of the four tests were in Herring Township. Alicia in Boone, South Forty-five Route, East Lake Mitchell Drive, and West Lake Mitchell Drive.
None of them were the advocates.
Excuse me, you're, you're, this is not your turn to talk, thank you.
None.
You are not permitted to speak, I'll have you removed if you continue to disrupt.
Things get a little tense, just sitting here, you know, it's like sometimes the silence is an awkward, it reminds me of that one guy on TV that always said awkward. It is, it's awkward, and it doesn't have to be awkward. If things continue as they are, it will continue to be awkward. Duty. I think, I think of my son, the United States Army Ranger. Honor, duty, integrity. It matters, you're responsible, you are accountable to your people. You've been hearing it again and again, I don't know if you feel that you're being accountable and transparent. But for what I'm here, what I've heard tonight, I'd have to say no, absolutely not. Something has to be done, and sometimes the things we have to do aren't pleasant, but it's good and it's better for all if they are done. Instead of continue to hear, as you referred to it at one meeting, the jeering from the public. You make the statement before every public comment about not, you know, being unpleasant, getting on people's cases about things, well, if we don't get on cases about things, nothing's going to happen. Uh, the, things got to change. And I've lived in this town for almost forty years now, and I feel like it's, it's home. And I left for eighteen months at one point, and you know where I want to come back to? Right here at Cadillac. And what I've been seeing over the last three years in these meetings that I've been coming to has been extremely disheartening. We got to get it together, people. You got a job to do, you've got a duty to do that job. Thank you.
Pamela Marine, Forest Lane. Uh, simple, simple fact. The council members need to know the topics that are being discussed here. They need to do their research, and they need to be competent, so that they recognize when Jeff or Marcus gives them an answer that does not make any sense and is not grounded in truth, they know to ask questions. I appreciate, Mr. Ingles, that you did some of that today. That's what you need to do, you have to do your jobs, you are elected to represent us. And so you've got to do your homework, so when somebody says something that is ridiculous or contrary to what they said the last time, you recognize it and you ask questions. We need better from you, that's why all these people are so angry. You're not being competent yourself, and you're allowing the city manager to do a sixty, seventy percent job. And the things he's dropping are critical.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Ponzac, I live in Cadillac. I think this meeting today is about to draw to a close. And generally, when they close, we're served up with a dish of platitudes about being kind and pleasant. And the platitudes are nice, and we should be kind and pleasant. And we get a whole dishful of those at the end of every meeting. I'd a lot rather see competence.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Durant, I live in Kenwood Park area, corner of Seneca and North Boulevard. I am not up here to yell at anybody. I appreciate every one of you, every one of you, including you. I know you're looking for answers, and I appreciate that. I know everybody has to work together, and the animosity is not going to help that at all. And I do appreciate what you're doing, and you're all a lot stronger than I am. Because if I had these people hollering at me, I'd quit, and I'm glad you don't. So just keep trying to work together and find us answers and not be pointing blame. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, going to close public comments and move to good of the order.
I had one quick question, Jerry, where are we, where are we at with the road end docs?
Uh, sure, I can give you a.
Give us an update, tell us what's going on.
Okay.
You're in charge of it, big guy.
Right, uh, Chairman Elwos came to me last week, and we discussed this matter, so I've been doing some research, and real quickly, um, just to bring everybody up to date, um, docs at public road ends are regulated by what's, uh, referred to as Michigan Public Act Fifty-six of the Public Acts of, uh, two thousand twelve, and with some exception, um, docs at public road ends are not permitted, and unless they're authorized by city council. The exceptions, for example, are, in some cases, like in certain subdivisions, you may have docs that are there by recorded deed, easement, dedication, and in some cases, perhaps, uh, the courts have ordered the, a doc, but in any case, um, under the law, unless the council approves them, they're not permitted. Uh, interestingly too, um, if a doc is permitted at a public road end, let's say I put that doc in because you give me permission, that doc is available to the public, uh, at large. It's not just confined to me under the, uh, under the law. I did have the opportunity, uh, to talk with the, uh, Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, Eagle, and essentially, they're not involved in the, uh, per, uh, approval, uh, review and permitting of the seasonal ducks, such as the one I believe we're talking about, provided there aren't any shoreline or water-related modifications, uh, provided that there's not an impact on the navigable, uh, area of the water, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So pretty much, it's, it's up to, uh, up to us. And basically, what we're doing, staff's doing, and I don't think this is going to take very long. Uh, after having talked with Eagle, uh, we're going to be, we're reviewing the current city's zoning ordinance, or, I'm sorry, uh, doc regulations, uh, and we'll be putting forth, uh, our findings and presenting to council our thoughts on possibly, uh, should we stay with what we have? Or, uh, we may even recommend some, some modifications or changes, and we'll be bringing those back to you. And again, I don't think this is going to take very long.
Thanks, Jerry, I appreciate you stepping in for John Wallace after he retired too.
Thanks, Jerry.
That's it.
Anybody else have anything?
Um, I think our utilities director may want to try to clarify a couple of points.
Okay.
Yeah, sure, if I may. Uh, former council member King had mentioned that Pete and Presha, uh, it sounded like he was indicating they had monthly meetings for LDFA, they did not.
Yeah, excuse me.
Oh, they, if they might have had the bylaws, but they did not have the monthly meetings, if that's, they weren't, I guess I was getting to the point, they were not following the bylaws. If they had the bylaws, they were not following them. Uh, ninety-seven, before I became director, they were not monthly meetings. And then when I became director in two thousand and eight, there was not monthly meetings. So this is a longstanding, um, part of the bylaws that was not followed. Uh, you can ask Pete, you could ask Presha, and, and they would indicate that, so. Um, the other ones, I, I'm sorry if I upset Mary about the Herring Township, I don't, I don't know where these areas of interest are exactly, I know they're not in the city, the ones that Cyclope are, and the state are retesting or, or quabbling over. I do know Susan brought them to the attention of, uh, M Part for them to go and open up an area of investigation on those. I was on those calls when Susan brought those up. I thought they were from the water advocates, maybe they were private tests that those people had, uh, brought in, but I, I do know the way the state was made aware of them was through Susan, and I thought that was through the clean water advocates. So I'm sorry if I upset people on that one, but that was just what I know, I would, like I said, I was on those phone calls, so, um.
Thank you.
So.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have anything?
I have one thing, um, completely unrelated, because I am still also the advisor for the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council. And this next Friday, the thir- is it the thirteenth? It's Friday the thirteenth. Yes, indeed it is. Friday the thirteenth, June thirteenth, with, which is a week from Friday, will be the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council Movie in the Park. Um, it's sponsored by DTE Energy, who has provided the funding for that movie, we have to pay licensing fees. The movie is, um, The Sandlot. So bring the kids, bring grandma and grandpa and everybody on down for a free movie in the park Friday night. Unfortunately, we're so close to solstice that the sun doesn't set, set till after nine, so plan on a late evening. And I want to remind, um, I want to remind Ken to make sure that the watering is turned off. Because one meet, one, one movie last summer that ran late, because it was still light, we got started late, at the end of the movie, all of a sudden, shh, 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 all the spigots went on. June thirteenth. And, um, and people were just scrambling, and, and it was wonderful, it was a warm evening, no one was upset, and it was kind of fun, and. But we don't want that to happen again, I can't scramble as quickly as I used to, so, so that's that, and that's all I have. Anything else? Well, then, we are, we have on the agenda to go into closed session, we have a letter um, from the city manager requesting a closed session for his review. And I want to give you all a little bit of information before we go in, so don't go way too fast, okay? So here is, this is what we're going to do, okay? Um, process right here, okay? So this is, this is the process we're going to have, so first of all, prior to the executive feedback discussion, we are going to go into closed session to have a discussion for the annual pro- performance review of the city manager. Prior to that discussion, all council members were provided a template for executive feedback areas of discussion. Using that template, council will meet privately in closed session to discuss the manager's performance over the previ- for the previous year. After council has a chance to, for discussion, the city manager will be invited into the room for further discussion. Based on the discussion and feedback by council and to the manager, the mayor will prepare a written evaluation to be shared publicly and placed into the executive's personnel file within two weeks of this meeting. So it will be ready by our next council meeting. During this time, there will be no discussion or decision regarding contract or salary benefit changes. None of that will be held or made during closed session or any part of the evaluation process. We're decoupling those things. So be assured, we're not going to go in there and, and give the manager a bunch of new money, or fire the manager, or anything like that. We are going to give him a performance review from the previous year, and that's all we will be doing. So with that being said, will someone make a motion to go into closed session?
I make a, uh, motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight one A to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager at his request.
Second.
House Member Ingles.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yeah.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. And we will come back and go back into open session before adjourning the meeting after the closed session. All right, everybody.
You can just stand by me, I gotta go back and get my stuff.
Okay, we can get it from here too, who can?
Yeah.
Hey Mike.
We need a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Councilmember French?
Motion to adjourn, where Dan?
Yes, Alamos?
Oh, don't we have to make a motion to go back into open session?
Yes, I make a motion then we go back into open session.
French?
But there is no action to adjourn.
Alamos? Hopkins? Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes.
And then you just smack this camel. No, there's no motion.